Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is September 7th, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation, pledge allegiance by Councilmember Tate.
Thank you, Your Highness. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the lessons that You have provided to us in the study of Cape Coral. I pray You protect our earth and waters and all those who share with me our faith in Your city's wisdom. I am direct to all of Your blessings for the residents of the city and all the residents of the world. Would You be able to...
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdine.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or do I have a motion to adopt as presented?
Don't move. Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Item six is recognitions and achievements. At this time, I'd like to recognize two employees for their outstanding service and dedication to this city. Thank you for being such a valuable member of our team. Madam City Clerk, could you, as I'm making my way down, call those two individuals up?
Penny Arsenal, 20 years of service. City Manager. Joseph Perlak, 30 years of service.
Madam City Clerk, we had some other individuals for today in the presentation that couldn't be here. Could you please state their names so we can recognize them as well?
Linda Corolo, 23 years of service. Thomas Edwards, 30 years of service. Carlos Menya, 25 years of service. John Chelkus, 23 years of service. Stephen O'Connor, 26 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thanks to those employees for their hard work, their dedication, and the years of service that they contributed to the community of Cape Coral, and we wish them well in their future endeavors. Okay, next item is item seven, approval of minutes. We don't have any minutes to approve, so item eight is citizens' input time. We have a maximum of 60 minutes set for the input of citizens on matters come city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name, and we will utilize the podium to my left in front of the double doors.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, John Ilchizen, aka Wally I. And I'm here to express a little disappointment in our HR department. And City Clerk has put up one of the administrative regulations that were to be followed for hiring and promotions and the building of an eligibility list after they do interviews. It's pretty clear and unambiguous what that number B says. It says, "There shall be one final eligibility list per classification per department." Simple. Not so. Not when it comes to City of Cape Coral's HR department and the way that they conduct business. I can say this, that this is an administrative regulation, and it's been violated. It's been rectified today because at a common courtesy and professional courtesy, I give the City Manager notice what I'm coming for, and he asked me for the subject, and I told him AR whatever this is, 59 or whatever, I don't know, but it doesn't matter. What happened is different departments have similar classifications, or maybe even the same classification. And somebody was promoted, left a vacancy in DC, whatever, DCD I'm going to call it, whatever it is now, Development Services or whatever. So that opened up a position, and it was for a same classification. So rather than doing their work and reaching out and posting the position, they felt it was easier to just contact an employee from the Public Works classification and offer the position to the employee and say, "You're the successful candidate. You got the job." Well, that's not what that says. So they retracted the job offer today when they found out I was coming. But what does that do to the employee that they already offered the position to and said, "You're the successful candidate"? Now you've busted the morale of another employee of the City of Cape Coral and put disdain in their taste. So listen, like I said, when our employees and our members from our local violate an AR, they get put on report. So many times that we come in and we say these things and find these things out that they're violating their own policies, and it just gets, want to get swept under the rug. They discussed this two times on two labor management meetings on Tuesday mornings. They discussed, Richie Jones and another executive board member discussed this exactly to Dave Anderson, when he said he was going to do exactly what he did, and they said, "You can't," and he did it anyway after two different weeks of labor management meetings.
Thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, Lisa, you could tell your team, we're no longer coming to the Tuesday mornings labor management meetings.
Thank you.
They're useless.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Ray Keack, and I stand before you for two issues. On August the 27th, between 8:00 and 8:30 p.m., Cape Coral Police Department responded to gunshots. For some unknown reason, they showed up at my house, beating on my door, asking if I knew anything about it, and I knew nothing. After they had left, I discovered that they had broken my front door. And on August the 28th, I filed a report with the police department. It is now September 7th, and I have yet to hear from anybody from the city with regards to damaging my door. So I want to know, is there something that can be done so that, you know, I don't know who to contact or anything? And second thing that I have to discuss with you, I live at 1414 Southeast 8th Avenue. I am one half of a duplex. I own my side of the property, and the other side is owned by a person by the name of Rich Manick. I have been in contact with Code Compliance Officer Legori. The person has, for all intensive purposes, abandoned the property. There is no utilities. Before he abandoned it, he was caught by the police department stealing my utilities as well as a neighbor on the other side, and nothing was ever done. Now the property is totally vacant. There is rat infested, there are snakes chasing the rats. I've caught four rats in my garage, two snakes, and my wife is just to the point where we want to move. And all I'm asking is that the city come in and clean the property up. Can it be done? You know, the Code Compliance Legori took this matter, filed the offenses. He did not reply, I mean, Legori eventually took it to court, and for some unknown reason, after a month and a half, the judge gave him an additional two weeks to make good on the property. Well, as of today, that is the additional two weeks. Nothing is done. There's a sale sign on the front property, but for what reason, I don't know. You know, if you contact the realtor, the place is not for sale. I think it's just, you know, an elaborate scheme to hold off the foreclosure because I believe that the realtor is nothing more than family of the registered owner. I've been told that, you know, there's nothing that can be done, so I appeal to you. Can something be done to clean the property up? You know, get rid, you know, there's berries that are falling from the palms, that's attracting the rats, the rats attract the snakes, and there's bugs and everything else. I work hard to keep my property clean. You know, the city has great expectations of its residents. I feel that the residents should have great expectations of the city as well.
Thank you.
Can something be done?
Yes, sir, your three minutes is up, but have a seat. I'm sure we'll have staff contact you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Lou Navara. Now, Mayor, don't get upset with me and hammer me out of order. I'm suffering from what old men get. It's private, but I'm going to be nice. Let's get to work, as Governor Scott said. So what are we doing about rescinding the 7% tax on utilities which you raised, and then the LCEC hit us with a huge oil bill? I've asked you to rescind it for now, and you don't need to worry about building that bus barn. Y'all don't listen to me, and you're waiting now for the new school board, but you have the ability. What are we doing about the tax rate? I think we should have the lowest rate. I know one of the people here at council, the one that replaced Mr. Rick, said, "We are having a windfall profit, but we got to, you know, keep the tax up." Please, we've had windfall profits for a number of years. That sounds like the school board talking. So I want you to do the lowest rate. The trash, do we get $5.80 a year or $5.80 a month? Because if it's a year, that's five day 80? That's magnanimous for two years? Come on, you raise that every year when you do the assessments. Shame on you, and I'm sure you spend a mint on attorney's fees. That's what I've been researching. Mayor, I've asked you before about the ecology, and the nice full-bodied lady there said you were always interested. Remember, I talked about the bald cypress? They're protected, and they keep wrecking them. But I noticed your signs. Shame on you. How many trees did you use in wood? Shame. And you're for the ecology? Lastly, you keep denying my First Amendment rights to make a presentation to this board, as well as you guys go ahead and keep making up rules that aren't in the charter. I'm getting upset that I don't want a mayor next year that's a rollover from Mayor Joe, God rest his soul. Are you planning to go to China once you're elected? That's a joke. I expect you to laugh, Mayor.
Keep it to the city business.
Anyway, you know, it's time to really help the people. Thank you. God bless you all.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Just before I open up the council discussion, Mr. Navera, the one thing that you mentioned in there about the request for a petition to council, you know, I've denied it three times because you've entered into an agreement that you've relinquished any rights to come forward on any additional claims, and by the advice of the city attorney. And it's fairly clear in the agreement that you signed, it's why I denied it. So you've done it...
Mayor?
If, for the next, I've denied it the last three times, and if you happen to do it again, I'll deny it again for the same reason. As far as any of the other topics, I'll open those up. Councilmember Long.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for the record. I assume that gentleman that just spoke was referring to me as the successor to Councilmember Williams, and he mischaracterized my position on the rollback. I have been a proponent of the rollback rate since the original vote and continue to be a proponent of the rollback rate. Thank you.
And one last thing I forgot to mention, Mr. City Manager, as far as the HR concern that was brought up during citizens' input, we've got that taken care of, it sounds like?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the first time I heard the actual details of the complaint. I was aware that Mr. Ilchizen notified me this afternoon that he was coming to the meeting. I did not know the specifics, so I did not have time to look into it, but I will look into the issue that he raised.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Yeah, I think the police chief went out with the other gentleman to address his concerns, and I think we've addressed everyone. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item 9A. I'll open up the consent agenda for council to pool any items for discussion, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
Further discussion?
What? Oh.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item B is appointments to boards and committees. We do not have anything listed tonight. Item 9C is unfinished business. 9C, follow-up items for council. There's none listed. Does council have any follow-up items? Okay, seeing none, new business. We do not have any listed personnel actions. We do not have any listed petition to councils. We do not have any listed. So we'll move on to item 9G, follow-up items from city management. G1 is water quality update. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Dr. Maya Robert will brief you on recent developments pertaining to water quality in the Cape.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Maya Robert, Public Works. Lee County, on behalf of the municipality, sent a letter to Colonel Booth from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding the Lake Ketchumwee system operating manual. Our representative Congressman Byron Donalds as well sent a letter. Please note that there will be a meeting, a board meeting tomorrow from the South Florida Water Management District, and part of the agenda will be to discuss the comments they want to make about lossome. There will be also further discussion. As you may have noticed, this year has been extremely atypical. We've had a very dry wet season this summer. It hasn't rained that much on the lake. The lake is low, and the South Florida Water Management District is contemplating actually doing water cutbacks in the next months, and that would be a hot topic for discussion as it will affect our estuary and the ecology. And as it stands, the current lake manual does not account for such a situation. On the Cape Coral, blue-green algae conditions, the toxin results that were analyzed by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and by our private lab came all negative on the location that we showed you last week. However, something that was not mentioned, that we just got a report of this afternoon and yesterday afternoon by staff, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection went this afternoon to sample in one of the finger canals of the South Pleda Canal. It's called the Killer Canal, and there was a report of a blue-green algae bloom, and they took a sample for toxin analysis. So we'll keep you updated on that. The Florida Fish and Wildlife Agreement, we are drafting up with procurement and the city attorney's office, an agreement that then the state agency will sign on and to fulfill the U.S. Army Corps permitting process for the bubble curtains. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? And I believe that I forwarded the emails from the Lee County Commission as far as the lonesome letter that we sent Colonel Booth, and we partnered with not only our city, the city of Sanibel, and the Lee County Commission, and sent that letter out. And also, I believe I forwarded the letter from Congressman Donalds as well, which pretty much mirrored the same content as the first letter. So I wanted to make sure everyone got a copy of that. So thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is permitting process update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have Matt Grambo from the City Manager's Office come to the podium and update you on the latest developments regarding improvements to our permitting review process.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Matt Grambo, Special Projects Coordinator in the City Manager's Office, here to provide you with your weekly EnerGov and permitting update. During today's update, I'm going to be providing an update on the 60-day action plan progress, as well as a discussion of the recently implemented single-family residential reconfiguration, staff's progress on the EnerGov version 2021 testing, an update on our efforts to escalate with Tyler Technologies for additional support and implementation resources, and finally, provide a staffing update for development services and information technology services. For our 60-day action plan, all tasks that have been scheduled for the first 16 days of the 60-day period have been completed, and the first goal of the five goals in the action plan, the completion of the residential construction reconfiguration, is also complete with the residential construction reconfiguration going live yesterday on September 6th. Since last week's council meeting, staff have been completing final testing, and the go-live for the residential construction reconfiguration was yesterday. There is ongoing testing for the 2021.1.4 version of EnerGov. Staff are working on cleanup automation testing and review, and we've escalated our support and post-implementation service requests with Tyler Technologies. And finally, we've identified the members of the initial service delivery excellence advocacy team. Overall, we're on track to meet all five of our 60-day action plan goals by the end of that 60-day period, which is Friday, October 21st. As I mentioned, yesterday, the single-family residential reconfiguration went live on the city's production servers, and this reconfiguration has a couple benefits, including fewer steps during both of the application and the review process, and there's also a revised intake process, and the city's established a dedicated single-family residential permitting CSR team within EnerGov. What this allows us to do is to expedite our completeness checks on the very front end of the single-family residential permits and get those permits into concurrent building review a little bit more quickly. So combined with fewer steps on the application and the review process and the dedicated single-family residential permitting CSR team, we believe that we'll be able to reduce the turnaround times for our single-family residential permits. Also, since this single-family residential permit reconfiguration was so substantial, it was one of the most complicated and detailed permit application workflows that the city has within EnerGov, we'll be able to use portions of the reconfiguration with other permit-type reconfigurations in the coming weeks and months, which will expedite those reconfigurations. So this was the longest and most complicated one, and we'll be able to use the work that we did for this reconfiguration to make other reconfigurations go a little bit more quickly in the future. For our testing of the 2021 version of EnerGov, we have a 36-staff member team that is actively testing the new version of EnerGov in all EnerGov process areas. There have only been a few issues that have been discovered in the past few weeks of dedicated testing, and those are, the few issues is mainly due to very similar configuration and UI setups between the 2020 and the 2021 version of EnerGov. Most of the big improvements between those two versions is on the back end, which will result in the increased stability and the better performance of the system itself, rather than through anything that applicants or staff members will see. The EnerGov testing team, those 36 staff members, are meeting weekly to report on progress on testing and also to document issues and notice differences between the two versions of EnerGov. Also, during this testing process, staff are noting all functionality improvements, so things that the system does that weren't possible in 2020 that are possible in the 2021 version to be implemented in the future. But right now, we're focused on going live with our current configurations, with their current functionality, on October 5th. So we are on track to meet that goal. We're planning to go live with EnerGov. We're scheduled with Tyler Technologies for the system to be down on Monday, October 3rd, Tuesday, October 4th, and then the system will be live with the 2021 version of EnerGov on Wednesday, October 5th. Additionally, staff are preparing for three dedicated focus testing sessions with the CCCIA for Monday, September 19th, Wednesday, September 21st, and Friday, September 23rd. And during those sessions, staff and CCCIA membership will be working on several test permit types. Each session's about an hour and a half, so over those five hours, we'll be going through very common permit types, identifying any potential issues, as well as familiarizing the industry with the changes to the 2021 version, and having another set of eyes on any potential changes so that we can address those prior to the go-live week. Yesterday, members of city management, including the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, myself, the Development Services Director, the Information Technology Services Director, and our Business Applications Analyst Stacy Di Giacomo, met with leadership of Tyler Technologies, including the GM of Civic Services, Greg Savard, the VP of Professional Services, Peter Stubbs, the Principal Implementation Manager, Tejas Patel, and our Strategic Sales Representative, Phil Sharp, to discuss an escalation of support from Tyler during the transition to the 2021 version of EnerGov, as well as in the weeks that follow, to ensure that everything goes smoothly for us. They confirmed during this meeting that the 2021 version of EnerGov upgrade will provide the city with a more stable system than the current 2020 version, and this is a message that we've received from our support staff at Tyler, as well as staff at the City of Des Moines and at other municipalities that utilize the EnerGov service. But to hear it directly from Tyler management in a very clear manner is encouraging as we're preparing for this upgrade. Additionally, we reviewed the ITS proposed statement of work that was drafted by our ITS Director, Michelle Hoffman. That involves additional resources that Tyler will provide us in the coming weeks in preparation for the 2021 upgrade and in the weeks that follow. And this additional, these additional... And these additional services will include them assigning their most experienced implementation management team, with each member with over 10 years of EnerGov implementation experience, as well as a prioritization of our existing support tickets with Tyler. For our weekly staffing update, for the new Development Services positions, as well as the new ITS position, for the Customer Service Representative position, we've received 327 applications for the 10 vacancies. All of those positions have been filled, offered, or accepted as of this week. For our one opening for Assistant Building Official, we've received 52 applications. However, no qualified applicants have applied. For our Building Inspector Residential Provisional positions, we've received 47 applications for the four vacancies. Two candidates are currently interviewing, and eight additional candidates are currently under review. For Building Inspector Provisional, we've received 24 applications for the two vacancies, and we have eight candidates currently interviewing. For Plan Review Technician, we've received four applications for the two vacancies, and both of those vacancies have been filled with internal candidates. For Plans Examiner, we've received 40 applications for the five vacancies. One offer has been accepted. That individual is starting September 19th, and five candidates are currently interviewing. And finally, for Customer Service Supervisor, 28 candidates interviewed for the two positions. One individual has started, and one is scheduled to start on the 19th. And over in ITS, the EnerGov Application Administrator Position, very difficult position to fill, is still posted. Recruitment activities are continuing. However, we have a strong candidate interviewing later this week. And so with that, thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I'll open up for any questions. Councilmember Tate.
Matt, would you tell me who the Service Delivery Excellence Advocacy Team members are?
Sure. It will be members of, it'll be several of our subject matter experts in each department. So that'll include myself, it'll include Stacy Di Giacomo, our Business Applications Analyst. It will include Brian Vander Walker from our Public Works Department. It will include Bogdan Sernick from our Development Services Customer Service Team, as well as Taylor McLean from our Customer Services Team, as well as several other individuals. So it'll be a team of approximately 10 to 12 people. We are also working with some additional consultant time from our Plant Moran Agreement to identify any additional members of that group. And our first meeting per the 60-day action plan will be the week of October 10th, just to give us one week to address any potentially unseen issues from the 2021 upgrade. And then that team will be focused on continuous improvement, prioritization of additional reconfigurations, and additional work to ensure that we're able to make sure that we have continuous improvement with the performance of the system, as well as any business process changes that need to be made to support that effort.
Okay. And as Plant Moran, since they were our consultants, and they gave us that big work study, can we get an update on, we are working through their recommendations, and this is where we are. Are they overseeing all of this as well, or have they moved on now?
So they've moved on now. We are following their short-term recommendations. That includes the creation of the customer service, the Service Delivery Excellence Advocacy Team. But remember, those short-term recommendations were really up to that 2021 go-live. Their initial engagement with the city was to do an assessment and optimization plan, and they fulfilled that. They currently have provided us with a statement of work for a second phase of that engagement. City staff are currently evaluating that proposal, determining value, and making a determination on next steps on that. But at this point, for the next several weeks until the first week of October, we really are solely focused on doing our data cleanup, ensuring that the 2021 upgrade goes smoothly, some additional push-button permit reconfigurations, and the launch of that Service Delivery Excellence Team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
Mr. City Manager, the person in the Building Department that just submitted their resignation, I understand this is a person that worked well with our building industry, the CCCIA, and it's left them a bit concerned moving forward on that position and how it might be filled, and the trust that can continue, you know, with that person and possibly another person. Can you address a little bit how we're moving forward with that position?
Yes, Councilmember. Thank you for the question. So for the benefit of individuals in the audience, we were notified today that our building official, Mr. Stephen Popowski, has decided to accept a new challenge in his career. And as of today, he submitted his letter of resignation effective September 23rd. While we view this as a loss to the organization, Stephen has been with the city for several years, and as you mentioned, he has developed a close working relationship with the industry. We understand that, you know, he felt it was time in his professional development to seek new opportunities, and we wish him nothing but the best in all of his endeavors. Regardless, Councilmember, we will continue to be responsive to the needs of all of our customers, and the relationship that they have built over time with representatives in our Development Services Department will continue, despite the fact that Mr. Popowski will not be serving as the building official. In terms of our immediate plans, we will be bringing on a firm that will provide us with short-term building official services while we go through the process of recruiting, interviewing, and ultimately selecting a new building official. You know, the timing couldn't be any worse. You know, when we came to about a month ago now, you know, we realized that we had key person dependency in that role, which is why we asked council to create an Assistant Building Official. So, you know, we have, you know, a bench to turn to in the need, in the event that we need to do that. But, you know, we've been advertising that position now for about 30 days or so, and that position has been difficult to fill. So I think we're going to have a little harder challenge finding a building official. They're not, it's not an easy position to fill, requires very specific qualifications. And so in the short term, we are turning to a private firm that will be providing those services on an interim basis. In addition, we are using a separate staffing company that is going to provide us with some higher level, I don't want to use the word executive, but it's that type of leadership level staffing support to assist Mr. Cetero, the Development Services Director during this time. As you know, we've got some key vacancies in that department. About a month and a half or so ago, the city's planning manager, Mr. Bob Peterson, retired. So we've got that position to fill. We have the Assistant Building Official position to fill, the Deputy Director position in Development Services, and now the Building Official. So we've got a gap in full-time permanent leadership at the moment, and so we are turning to these staffing agencies to provide us some of the additional managerial resources for the short term. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. The only comment I wanted to make, Mr. City Manager, on, and thank you for the update, Matt. And I know you guys are focused with this 60-day plan, but I mentioned it, I believe, last meeting when we had an update, because I think it is critical to at least identify those permits that are considered push-button or next-day permits. So, you know, I'm hoping that right after this, at least right after this 60-day process that we're going through, staff could at least identify those particular permits that would qualify for those next-day type permits. So I just wanted to mention that again, because I do think that's going to be critical in this, part of the success of moving this forward. But thank you for the update. Any other questions? Okay. See and none. We'll move on to item 10, as Ordinances and Resolution, Resolution 182-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 182-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Makado Canal and Lafayette Canal rights of way, and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 25 and 26, block 31, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 25 and 26, block 31, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2. Property located at 5360 Makado Court, providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council. For the record, Patrick Alton White, Senior Planner, Planning Department. This case is Resolution 182-22. I've highlighted the parcel before you on this aerial in red. That's the Kaluushachi over there to the east. We're very close to it. The applicants are Brian and Kristen Hag, trustees of the Fuss Family Revocable Trust. The site's about 13,000 square feet. It's located at 1560 Makado Court. And the request is to vacate a 214-square-foot portion, sliver of Canal Right-of-Way and underlying easements, and an additional 164 square feet of platted public utility and drainage easements budding the east and south of that property. These next couple slides are going to show you exactly where. There is the property depicted there in the top-left corner. The Exhibit 1, which is a Canal Right-of-Way vacation, is depicted on the left. Exhibit, and that's the portion on the east side of the property. On the south is Exhibit 4, a vacation proposed on the Lafayette Canal. Exhibits 2 and 3 are vacations of the public utility easement. These are coincident with the other vacations. Exhibits 3 and 6 are reservations, or portions of the Canal Right-of-Way that we are not releasing our public utility easement to. And the purpose of that is to retain a perimeter easement totaling six feet wide. The staff does conduct a review of these vacations. Staff found that the right-of-way will not foreseeably serve a valuable public purpose due to its size and location. The vacation will not affect maneuverability of any users of these canals. We've received three letters of no objection from the public utility companies serving the city. Easements are reserved in order to maintain a six-foot perimeter PUE. The hearing examiner heard this case on July 12th, which was continued from a prior meeting. The hearing examiner did recommend approval. Staff is recommending approval. I've received no correspondence. There was one speaker at Hex. That objection was resolved. I then received two other telephone calls prior to this meeting that were just general inquiries. At this point, I'll stand by for any of your questions.
Thank you. Now, public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 182-22? Please come forward. See and none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 182-22?
Don't move.
Any council discussion? See and none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Ordinance 72-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 72-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 25 through 49, block 2179, and lots 24 through 56, block 2233, Unit 33, Cape Coral subdivision. From commercial to residential, single-family zone. Property is located at 1712 through 1840 Northeast 23rd Terrace, 2324 Northeast 19th Avenue, and 2330 Northeast 19th Avenue, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good evening, Chad.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Planning Division. This is Ordinance 72-22. This is a City of Cape Coral-initiated application. There are multiple owners within this. It's a portion of a couple of blocks. This is south of Kismet Parkway and east of Del Prado Boulevard. It's a little under seven acres in size. It currently has utilities available to it, and the request is a rezon from the commercial district to the single-family residential district. And this is the second of a two-part action that the City Council undertook a couple of months ago to revert some property back to single-family residential. The block is, like we mentioned, it's just south of Kismet Parkway. There are about, there's 14 undeveloped parcels and nine single-family homes. It was changed from a collection of commercial professional and commercial activity center throughout the years, and then last couple of months ago, we changed it back to single-family residential based upon basically the limited commercial viability of these properties. This is, the rezon would allow for, one, the single-family homes that are there to have their conforming status be restored, and then additionally, it would allow for the 14 undeveloped parcels to be able to build single-family homes on there. You can see here that the current zoning to the north is commercial professional. That is replicated to the west. To the north, you have some multifamily residential zoning, along with the CP. To the south, and to the east, you have single-family residential zoning. We looked at this per the Land Development Code. We found that the proposed district will be compatible with the majority of the uses that are around there. We mentioned that to the south and to the east, you have single-family homes. And also additionally, within that area, you have existing single-family homes that are within that block. It'll be compatible. It'll allow for the construction of new homes, and also allow the current homeowners to have some conforming rights afforded back to them. We mentioned that the, this particular area, it doesn't really have any commercial viability based upon the addition, the presence of the single-family homes that are there. And then especially for that row of lots that is south of a local street, there's really no commercial frontage there, and there's not likely to have any commercial development occur there in the future. And we took this to the State of Cape Coral Hearing Examiner, and she recommended approval of this rezon request. There were two speakers in support of Ordinance 72-22, and we had one speaker in opposition. And I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. Now, open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 72-22? Please come forward. See and none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 72-22?
Don't move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Welsh.
Do you know if the one person opposed was one of the homeowners that lived in this zoning?
They actually were one of the homeowners that were, there was, well, the speaker in opposition was a homeowner. I think that they were just kind of looking to have their commercial zoning retained for that piece of property. They thought that perhaps that one day, based upon what's going on around there, you might get some commercial development. But they were one homeowner out of nine, and then nobody else really spoke up against this.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? See and none. We have a motion as second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Move on to Ordinance 73-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 73-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 48 through 54, block 1547, Cape Coral, Unit 17, from industrial to residential single-family zone. Property located at 1905 through 1915 Northeast 6th Street, rezoning property described as lots 1 through 14, block 1548, Cape Coral, Unit 17, from industrial to residential multifamily low zone. Property located at 1919 through 2001 Northeast 6th Street, providing severability and an effective date.
This is also a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, good evening. Again, for the record, Patrick Alton White, Planning Department, Senior Planner. This is actually a pair of rezonings. We grouped them together due to their proximity. Originally, this pair of rezonings was collected with a number of other rezonings that was formerly known as ZA 2110. These were separated upon request. So this is the first of three presentations of rezonings that are city-initiated that I'll be presenting to you tonight. This first one is Ordinance 73-22. I've highlighted a group of three properties here in red and a group of six properties here in blue, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven properties in blue. Note that these are just a little down the street, a little to the east of the intersection of Northeast 6th Street and Del Prado Boulevard North. of Northeast 6th Street and Del Prado Boulevard North. Let's look a little closer. So this request, as I mentioned, is a proposed rezone of two groups. It's part of the city's calibration efforts when we found that we had properties that were zoned something that conflicted with the future land use classification of those properties. If this ordinance is approved, 10 parcels containing a total of two single-family homes and six duplexes will become legal conforming uses. Two vacant parcels will become developable. So over on the left, we have block 1547, lots 48, 54. And on the right, we have block 1548, lots 1 through 14. It's multifamily on the right, and it's single-family on the left. If we look closer at the future land use designation of what we'll call Area 1, those properties on the left, we see that they have a single-family future land use designation and a zoning designation of industrial. There's little, if any, develop industrial opportunity for that one single vacant property. Of course, it could be assembled, but it hasn't been to date. So right now, we find ourselves in a situation of having three parcels with this incompatible future land use pattern that has persisted since, I guess, 2019. The, as I mentioned, the single vacant lot has limited development potential. This rezoning will result in these two single-family homes becoming conforming. And I would note that should that property to the north redevelop, a 40-foot buffer would be required with a wall to screen any new industrial redevelopment from the single-family area. Let's look now briefly at the rezone Area 2. These, this is essentially a string of duplexes with one single property that remains vacant that is, that has a multifamily future land use classification, but again, an industrial zoning designation. So if this is approved, like the rezoning in Area 1 that we just looked at, if the industrial property to the north were to be redeveloped, it would require a 40-foot landscaping buffer with a wall to basically provide some screening between that industrial property and these multifamily properties. In addition, six duplexes would become conforming presently their non-conforming uses because of this mismatch. The, cumulatively, we did analyze these to determine whether or not there'd be any increase or major impact on city services. There is none. The development of these two properties is fairly negligible. The rezoning does comply with Land Development Code 3.4.6, which are the standards for rezonings. And we found this consistent with four policies of the future land use element within the comprehensive plan. The hearing examiner originally heard this case on January 4th before it was split up. It was a group, as I mentioned earlier, a collection. We did consult the city attorney's office. It was found that because the hearing examiner did approve the entirety of the proposed rezonings at that time, we could separate them without going back to the hearing examiner, which was great news. Staff is recommending approval of these two rezonings. I've received a written letter of the owner of the vacant lot in Area 1. I was also contacted by them by phone supporting the request. I did receive one other inquiry by phone. I received no negative input from any members of the public. Thank you for your time. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Now, open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 73-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 73-22?
Don't move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 74-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 74-22. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 1 through 38, block 3290, Cape Coral, unit 66, from residential multifamily low to residential single-family zone. Property located at 3404 through 3612, Southwest 15th Avenue, providing severability and an effective date.
This is also a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, Patrick.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, for the record, Patrick White, Planning Department, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. This case is Ordinance 7422. It's for a string of properties running down Southwest 15th Avenue. I wanted to give you this aerial to zoom out, to give you a little better idea where it is. We are just south and east of the intersection of Jakita and Gleason. That's your nearest major intersection, kind of close to those brand-new Aspire Apartments. This, there's 18 properties involved in this rezoning, and we're proposing to rezone from multifamily low to single-family residential. This, like the last case, is part of the city's calibration efforts where we had a zoning and a future land use classification that were inconsistent. The string is depicted here, zoomed in a little closer on this aerial. We're looking at 4.38 acres on block 3290, lots 1 through 38. The future land use map on the right shows these properties having a single-family residential future land use designation, but a multifamily zoning. So we're proposing to change these to single-family and fix that. The properties were originally rezoned from RX, or Residential Receiving District. It was zoned that way since 1990. That was just kind of a mistake that these were rezoned to multifamily. They probably should have been rezoned to single-family from the beginning. And this rezoning will fix that on our map. So like the last case, this will likely result in a net decrease of required city services. We're going from potential multifamily development down to only single-family development. It complies with LDC 3.4.6, our rezoning standards. It's consistent with Policy 1.15 of the future land use element. Like the last case, this was heard by the hearing examiner, January 4th, 2002, who recommended the granting of their quest. Staff is recommending approval. And I did recently receive an inquiry over the telephone on this case. They did not object. They were just curious what we were proposing. At this point, I'll stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 74-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 74-22?
Don't move.
Second.
There was a second?
Second.
Okay. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 75-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 75-22. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 39 through 45, block 3344, Cape Coral, unit 65, from residential, single-family to residential, multifamily low zone. Property located at 803 through 811, Southwest 40th Terrace, 4006 through 4010, Skyline Boulevard, and 804 Mohawk Parkway, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wish to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Patrick.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, for the record, Patrick White, Senior Planner, Planning Department. This is the final presentation I have for you tonight. This is Ordinance 7522. Like the last two cases, it is part of the city's future land use, excuse me, part of the city's calibration efforts where we found a discrepancy between future land use designation and zoning, or where that zoning was contrary to the established development pattern in, on the property. There are three properties involved in this proposed rezoning. The city is proposing to rezone these three properties from residential, whoop, that's not right. We're proposing to rezone them from residential, single-family to residential multifamily low. That is an out-of-date slide, so I'm going to move on to another one with better information there. Give me just one moment, sir. Kimberly, for the record, would you give me those addresses, please, one more time?
Property located at 803 through 811, Southwest 40th Terrace, 4006 through 4010, Skyline Boulevard, and 804 Mohawk Parkway.
Okay. Thank you, and I apologize for a PowerPoint malfunction. Those, addresses of those properties are the same that we're referring to. They are also the same that we've advertised for. That is all right. They are addressed properly, but my block and lot reference on this slide may be incorrect. Kimberly, could I verify something? Thank you. Thank you again for that moment. I wanted to compare a list of block and lots that I have that is in your council packet, that is in your staff report, that is correct. So the malfunction here is a malfunction on the PowerPoint slide only. If you would like, we can continue this, or I'd like to proceed with the presentation, believing that this is okay.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with this.
Thank you. Moving right along, this is approximately 1.1 and 1/2 acres. Two of these properties are developed. The property to the north at the intersection of Skyline and Mohawk Parkway is developed with two multifamily structures. The property located to the south on Southwest 40th Terrace is an existing duplex. That parcel there on the corner of Southwest 40th and Skyline Boulevard is, has submitted a pre-application for a future small multifamily building. If approved, this rezoning will provide consistency between the future land use designation and the zoning of these three parcels. That one duplex and that one multifamily development with the two structures will become conforming as a result of the rezone. And as I mentioned, a small apartment building is in the site development plan review located on that vacant parcel. The minor impacts are expected on city services. That property as it is right now could only be improved with a single-family home. They will be able to build a slightly more dense use on that single vacant property. The proposed rezoning complies with Land Development Code 3.4.6, the city's rezoning standards, and staff found it consistent with Policies 1.15, 1.7, 8.1, and 8.5 of the future land use element. The hearing examiner heard this case on January 4th, 2002, and recommended the approval of the request. Staff is recommending approval of the request. And I received two telephone calls within the past week that were, again, just inquiries as to what was going on. They lived generally south and east of the proposed rezoning and had no objection once I explained the case. At this point, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on Ordinance 75-22? Please come forward. She may be leaving. Yep. Okay. Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 75-22?
Don't move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Tate.
I just wanted to say thank you to your department for cleaning all these up. This has been quite a problem for quite a while. And I know that all these property owners are going to be thrilled with all these because finally, if something happens to their property, they'll be consistent. So I really appreciate you all getting this done.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 10B is Introductions, Ordinance 79-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 79-22. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as unit 66, block 3230, lots 15 through 23, Cape Coral subdivision, from professional to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at 1425 Gleason Parkway, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be September 21st, 2022.
Is there any staff or council discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 82-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 82-22. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 29, 30, 31, and 32, block 1699, unit 44, Part 1, Cape Coral subdivision, and lots 43 and 44, block 1699, unit 44, Cape Coral subdivision, from professional office to commercial zone. Property is located at 601 Cape Coral Parkway West and 602 Southwest 47th Terrace, providing severability and effective date. The public hearing will be September 21st, 2022.
Is there any staff or council discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution 194-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the public hearing date.
Resolution 194-22. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Barcelona Canal Right-of-Way located adjacent to lots 34 and 35, block 196, Cape Coral, unit 3, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 34 and 35, block 196, Cape Coral, unit 3. Property located at 137 Southwest 58th Street, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be September 21st, 2022.
Any discussion from staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution 201-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution 201-22. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Malibu Canal Right-of-Way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 7 and 8, block 30, Cape Coral, unit 1, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 7 and 8, block 30, Cape Coral, unit 1. Property located at 1224 Eldorado Parkway East, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be September 21st, 2022.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 52-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 52-22. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use for property described as lots 12 through 16, block 3100, unit 62, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 1917 Southwest Santa Barbara Place, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be September 21st, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 11, Reports. Councilmember Tate, report.
Yes, I just wanted to report tomorrow, the LA McLaughlin, known as the E-Awards for the Tourist Development Council, will be held. And I just wanted to let you know some people in Cape Coral that were recognized. Employees from the Fairfield by Marriott Inn, the Hampton Inn and Suites, Sunsplash Water Park, and the Weston at Cape Coral Resort. The Weston actually had nine people that they were nominated for outstanding service and recognition. So I wanted to say congratulations to all of those people, and they will be recognized tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh, report.
No report.
Councilmember Cosden?
Well, thank you. On Monday, I attended the Labor Day picnic that the IUPAT local labor union hosted. It was a good event. Thank you for having me. I also chaired the local coordinating board meeting today. The local coordinating board is a body of the MPO. We oversee the transportation disadvantaged. And finally, I wanted to ask if I could get, or if there's anyone who doesn't want me to go to National League of Cities in November. Or we go, I'm going to start booking travel, and I just want to make sure. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hayden, report.
Thanks, Mayor. Reminder to folks, Mayor Scholarship Ball's coming up, about a month away, on October 8th at the Weston, and tickets are available at capecoralsscholarship.com. They're celebrating 40 years, and congratulations to Cape Hospital. The birthing suites have been very busy there the past two months. In July, they set a 34-year record with 137 births, and last month, they smashed that record with 189 births. So it's interesting that by the time they turn 18, that'll be 2040, which was the original build-out date of the year of the city. So that's 326 new residents, and I'm going to assume most of them are now our newest Cape Coral residents, and I bet their families are going to be looking forward to see how we plan their future over the, for the next 18 years. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Long, report. Councilmember Nelson?
No report.
And Councilmember Shepherd?
No report.
All right, I just have a couple little things. On 9/5, also, I attended the Labor Day picnic for the general unions, and also, 9/6, attended the CRA meeting as well, and this afternoon, I attended the Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Committee meeting. Two things I wanted to bring up tonight. First off, we have a yearly evaluation that the city attorney had turned in to our staff today. It's a yearly evaluation that we do each year. Her particular evaluation is a little different because there's no real discussion on the, any increases in salary. It's set in the contract, and if anyone needs a copy of that, I'm sure staff can provide that for you. But we do have to do the evaluation. If a majority of council gives a favorable evaluation, then the city attorney would get, I believe it's a 4% increase, if I recall correctly. Is that true?
It's whatever the general employees get, but not less than 4%.
Okay. So we need to have that evaluation process done. I just wanted to check with council. I'm thinking two weeks, is that enough time to go ahead and do the, so if we could have those turned back in to Connie by September 21st, and then she will forward those. You have a question?
Is that emailed? Because I didn't see it come in today.
No, no. That was hand-dropped off today.
Okay, so we'll have those tomorrow.
Connie does have those, so she will get those out to you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right. The second item of discussion, we need to, I'd like to ask for a special meeting, maybe on September 28th, directly after the Cal meeting that we have scheduled that day. We also have to talk about council staff evaluation and increases. So what I'd like to do as well is get staff to provide those evaluation sheets to all of us, and that would give us, you know, I'm thinking the same two-week period, to get those back to me, and then we'll schedule a meeting, maybe in 2:20. I know it can be a public meeting. I know it has to be a public meeting, but I don't think that it has to be in this setting. That's what we've done in the past, if I recall correctly. Is that, is that true, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
So I'm thinking, schedule a meeting, special meeting for September 28th. Do we have to specify a time, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, yes, you do. If your other meeting runs long, you could always start this meeting late, or you could adjourn that one and convene this one.
I know the next few Cal meetings are pretty lengthy, so maybe 1 o'clock, maybe we'll set it for 1, 1 o'clock. No? 3 o'clock? All right.
3 o'clock, I think it's reasonable.
Okay. Sounds like we have a long day planned. So I'd ask, do we need a motion for that, for that special meeting?
If council is, you can ask if there's any objection to that, and if there is none, then you can go ahead and schedule it.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
I just want to clarify, for a special meeting, we list the purpose, and I have its regarding council staff increases. Is that the only topic?
And evaluation.
And evaluation. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll set that date for September 28th at 3:00 PM. Is everyone in agreement to that?
Aye.
Councilmember Welsh, I'm sorry.
So if we set it for 3:00 PM, and we manage to finish the Cal early, we have to wait until 3:00. But if we set it for, at the end of the Cal meeting, or for 1 o'clock, we could certainly delay the meeting and go there later. I just, I would hate that, I, you said later, later, but if on Cal day...
Why don't we set it at 1 o'clock if, because it sounds like...
And if we don't get to it until 2, then we don't get till 2. If we don't get it till 4:30, then it's 4:30. So I prefer to be optimistic on the fact that we get through these Cals quickly.
Okay. And I believe the city manager is going to hold us to that.
I just like to be optimistic.
Okay, well, why don't we make it 1 o'clock, and then, you know, if it's longer, it's longer. Sound good? Okay. You good with that, Madam City Clerk?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And that's all I have. So we'll go to reports. Madam City Attorney?
I have no report.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to remind members of city council that we have our first Cal meeting coming up next week, and that's after a long summer break. Just wanted to remind you, and obviously, we just talked about it a second ago, that we've got a lot of business in the pipeline, and so there are only four Cal meetings left in the year. So certainly, the two Cal meetings in September are going to be packed with items, so I think it's going to be an all-dayer. So please plan accordingly. For October, I'm hoping to scale back the topics just a little bit, but I think it is still be, still going to be a packed agenda. And then I am reserving November's Cal for discussion on a wide variety of water quality issues. So we've got a lot to talk about on that. We've got to talk about UEP, South Spreader. So that's going to be the focus for November. I'm trying to limit the agenda for November. And then that's it until we convene as a new council in January.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Anything, anything else from anyone? All right. Time and place of future meetings. We have a special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Thursday, September 8th, 2022, beginning at 5:05 PM here in council chambers. This will be our first budget hearing, and also, we have a committee. The whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, at 9:00 AM here in council chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.